Now I know when they look this way, it's just me. It was confusing, you know, whenever they look, I didn't realize that they looked at someone else.
Orders are moving in a little bit. I guess that's how it's gonna go. I don't feel so sure.
Get a chance to overhear this.
Yeah, you want to sit here?
We're about to get started. Popular demand, we did the dabble. Was that? Let's do the roll call. Ready? Everyone, good evening. Welcome to this special city council meeting. I'm gonna ask the deputy city clerk to please call the roll.
Mayor Constantine.
Doesn't.
Councilmember Spring.
Here.
McKay.
Yeah.
Ms. Deoli.
Yeah.
Martinez Betran.
Here.
You please declare the thing of tonight's agenda.
This meeting agenda was duly noticed and posted in accordance with government code section 549 54.2.
Now that I've got everyone seated, I'm going to ask you to please stand and join me for a silent invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance. Right. It is now my honor to invite the Yak members to provide their presentation this evening.
Yes, lovely. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. And we are with the Morgan Hill Youth Action Council and unfortunately today, our Yak advisor, Chiqui Mihia, couldn't be with us, but we're still really excited to be able to honor everyone here and to share our bid. And we wanted to start off with some introductions. So my name is Ria Deschpande and I am this year's Yak president. I've had the privilege of being with Yak for four years and I'm also now a senior at GECA.
Hello, everyone. My name is Vaishnavi. I'm Yak's vice president and I'm also a senior at GECA and this is also my fourth year in Yak.
Hi, my name is Pars Gandhi. This is my fourth year in Yak and I'm a senior at Sabato High School and I'm the developmental asset ambassador.
Hi, my name is Agnes. This is also my fourth year in Yak and I'm a senior at Oakwood and I'm also Yak's developmental asset ambassador.
I am Johnny Zercher and I'm the media ambassador for Yak. I go to Summit de Homa and I'm a junior there and this is my third year in Yak.
Hi, I'm Jasleen. I'm a sophomore at Sabato High School and I'm Yak's times reporter and social media ambassador and this is my second year in Yak.
Hi, I'm Ash. I'm a senior at Sabato and this is my first year in Yak. I'm a volunteer at the Magical Bridge Park and an active member.
All right, so that's a good amount of Yak today. We're really excited to have the opportunity to be here. As you might know, Yak is a group of 20 teens within the city of Morgan Hill. And our job is to really represent the youth and that's something that we get to do every month when we come and present in front of all of you and something that we're really grateful for too. You might have heard there are a lot of seniors in this group today and so we've been with Yak for the last four years. And in those four years, we've seen ourselves grow, but we've also seen the city grow and the council lead alongside of it. Mayor Constantine and councilmember John McKay, we really appreciate everything that you've done for our community. Within our city, each year we have our youth leadership Morgan Hill program. And I've never met a group of people who are more willing to come in and to support us and to speak to their experiences and give us their advice. And again, at our monthly city council meetings, I know that as teenagers, we feel really overwhelmed a lot of the time and to be able to have a safe space where we're coming in with the community, being honest and we're getting this real honest feedback within specials and people who have been through it and have experienced everything that we hope to one day experience too. It means a lot to us. So we wanted to start off with that thank you, but we're gonna hear from all of our other Yak members too.
Mayor Constantine and councilmember John McKay, I made countless contributions to the Yak in the city of Morgan Hill and we work intently to bring the community together. In Yak, one of our biggest responsibilities is to uphold the 41 developmental assets. In this developmental assets are a number of building blocks values which promote healthy and holistic internal and external developmental values for all individuals. Having a strong sense of optimism, having adult role models. We have the privilege of presenting a lot of the assets to city of Morgan Hill each one, and it is here more than anywhere most that we see how pure and true the community is. All these individuals have enriched the community and they listen with open hearts, open minds, and what we most often appreciate in vice. Thank you.
So they have time and time again demonstrated the spirit of developmental asset number seven, community values youth. Young person perceives that adults in the community value youth. You both have demonstrated your dedication to this asset by taking part in a number of city programs and community events and we wanted to thank you from the bottom of our hearts hearts for all that you have done. Even today, we're able to see the strong emphasis of this asset in our community. Youth Action Council, some recruitment program, Youth Leadership Morgan Hill. Mayor Constantine came in and talked about local government and exposed students to the variety of different city opportunities. Thank you for being able to like accommodate our needs and you leave the students impressed time and time again. And you leave them ready to take charge of their futures. And we appreciate the time and energy you have dedicated to the youth and thank you.
We as Yak members are so proud to have worked alongside of you, Mayor, Mayor Constantine and councilmember John McKay. As you both continue in your professional journeys, we hope you understand the hearts that you have touched and the impact that you have made on everyone you interact with. Your kindfulness, your humility and wisdom will carry you forward in success. Good luck and thank you.
In the time I've known you, you've both made massive contributions to our city. I cannot thank you enough for the positive impact you've made on me and others like me. Thank you.
Mayor Constantine, we have seen you with your daughter on so many community events. We appreciate how you're trying to build a better future for her and the Morgan Hill youth. Thank you.
Councilmember John McKay, I remember with Vaishnavi, both of us were talking to you a couple of months ago and you seemed like the most genuine person. You made us feel welcome in our conversation and gave us so much advice about college and our future. Thank you so much for making us feel like that and we're so grateful to have had this opportunity to work alongside you. Thank you.
But there were a lot of thank yous that just went around and I know that that can also seem like we're saying it for the sake of saying it, but that really is never true. We appreciate so much of what you've given to us and to the rest of the community. And as Yak members, we pretty much only exist because you guys led us. So thank you for that and for all of the opportunities that you've given us and we really do wish both of you luck. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
I think we can all see that with our youth, the future truly is bright. And so please give them a round of applause again. At this time, I'd like to introduce our city manager Christina Turner to say a few words.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, community, South County that came out tonight and my teammates that are here. One and I just want to take the opportunity to thank both Mayor Constantine and councilmember John McKay for their service. I thought I'd be able to totally hold it together tonight when I walked in to see the slideshow and
Don't make me cry.
The memories of the, of the many events, I, I certainly teared up. On behalf of my teammates, many that are here tonight, many that are not here, many that work all sorts of different shifts. From the bottom of our hearts, we want to thank you both for your service, but most importantly for being teammates alongside us. Over the last few years especially, we've gone through so much together. And I couldn't imagine doing it with anybody and the two of you and the rest of the council. Going through COVID, wildfires and evacuations and the protests and all the decisions that had to be made, you know, quickly. And all the wonderful things that we've accomplished and I could speak for an hour about them. Magical Bridge and all the developments and the downtown parks and all the great things that we've accomplished together. Both of you have really, really significantly supported our, our teammates and, you know, made us be able to do our jobs efficiently and effectively and you've always appreciated and thanked us for, for all of our work. Both of you just have amazing hearts and of course are very wise and smart. Mayor Constantine, your public servant heart has helped us so much being our mayor, you know, probably many know, but the mayor retired from San Jose Fire. I think we have San Jose Fire retiree out there as well. So you came, you know, as a council member and then a mayor with the public servant heart and I think that that helped immensely. Thank you for your flexibility. Working alongside here as well as the work we do with the League of California Cities. Emma has basically grown up around here. I remember her in City Hall in her little baby carrier. So thank you. Sir McKay, all of your work on the Downtown Association, the Planning Commission and just a huge heart for service for our community and just wanting to make and keep Morgan Hill the very, very special community it is. Thank you for your humor. Thank you for your work on the League of California Cities. And I just, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for everything that you've done. We're gonna miss you immensely. But I know both of you have already been tapped for different things around the community and I know there's gonna be people knocking on your door. So you're just gonna be serving in a different way and we look forward to that. Thank you both.
Great. Thank you for those kind words, Christina. And this time I'd like to introduce, or introduce the city attorney, Mr. Larkin. Do you have a few words you'd like to also say?
I, I, I do and I, I had something prepared, but I can't top Yak and Christina.
No one can.
But I'll, I'll tell a couple of personal stories. When I first applied to be city attorney, I was working as a, as an attorney for this county of Santa Clara, representing management and discipline of police officers and sheriff's deputies and firefighters and and I knew that Mayor Constantine was an active member of the firefighters association. And then councilmember Constantine was an active member of the firefighters association from San Jose and it made me a little nervous and the very first thing that Rich did in the interview was ask me about that and we had a conversation that totally put me at ease and made me feel super comfortable about coming to work in Morgan Hill because of your graciousness and your openness and your willingness to have a frank discussion about our respective roles and what they meant to us. Shortly after I was offered the job in Morgan Hill, I came down to, to show, we were moving down from the peninsula. I had lived here before, but my wife hadn't and so we made the plans to go have lunch at Rosie's and we got here a little early on a Saturday and there was one guy sitting up there on the sidewalk setting up a wine stroll in the downtown and that was, that was John and he, we asked him what was going on and he, it was all about downtown Morgan Hill and how it was growing and what was happening and and the, the wine industry that was growing here and, and really helped make us feel like, like Morgan Hill was the kind of place that we saw our future. And so, so I think both of you embody what it means to be a Morgan Hillian that we're welcoming and gracious and open. And so I know that's not gonna change and so I very much appreciate that. I'd also just say I appreciate anybody who runs for local government, public office. It is oftentimes a thankless job. The pay is terrible. The work is, you know, the work is, and we see from Mayor Constantine, we see the duck floating on the water. We don't see all of the really hard work that goes into being a council member, the meetings that aren't on Wednesday nights, but the, the constant meetings, the constant phone calls, the constant email, all of that is part of the job that, that our council members take on graciously and often thanklessly. And so, you know, much appreciation to, to you for serving, for those of you that ran, for running. It really is something that makes our community work, having people who are willing to make that sacrifice. So I, I don't know that everybody appreciates it, but those of us that see it really, really do.
Thank you very much for that, Don. I really appreciate that. At this time, I'm gonna invite my colleagues. I'm not gonna take anyone in particular. If anyone would like to say a few words, please do so. We'll treat this as a workshop. So I'm not gonna be calling on anybody. I'm just gonna let you guys talk.
Thank you, Mayor. So it's one of the last times I'm gonna be saying thank you. I'm gonna miss it. Over the last couple of years, I've really grown to appreciate how much time and effort that you put into being mayor and council member. I, I have to applaud you for your patience on the council, on the council, on the dais. There were times when I, I don't know how you would be as gracious as you were. You were just an amazing person as the chair of the floor. So thank you for getting that. Not many people know also, the mayor is involved with many committees, some of which him and I are on. One is the, the VTA where the mayor was extremely influential in bringing the express 568 bus down to the South County. I remember one of the first times for Caltrans when, when I was on the committee with the mayor. And I, I, I said to the group, when are we gonna get the electrification down to Morgan Hill and Gilroy? You stopped in San Jose, why, why didn't you bring it down? And, you know, the, the mayor on numerous occasions prior to my comment has strongly tried to bring the electrification down. So I agree with our city manager, behind the scenes, the mayor has worked tirelessly on, on many projects that the public doesn't really see. But other council members who are on the same committee see how hard the mayor works. So with, with that, Mayor, I just would like to express my sincere appreciation for my time with you here and I hope going forward you will consider me a friend.
Thank you. Thank you, Gina. I appreciate that. All right, we both know, I'd be happy to say so. Yeah, go ahead. I'm not, I said I'm not gonna be calling on you guys. Just to, to add what was said, the, and first of all, thank you all for being here. We haven't seen the room this far in a long time. So next meeting, January 11th, please be back. The, but I, I, John and Mayor Constantine, I, I've worked with you and served with you. First off, planning commissioner, John and I, together on the planning commissioner, you kind of listen in once in a while or giving us direction or telling us what to do. But I, I've, I've known you for, gosh, more than, both of you for more than 10 years. We, we often argued, we often fought, but we also had times when we had fun. And, and the public doesn't always see that, right? That we're all humans and we have our good and we have our bad days. But when you're up here, you know, this is not the team we choose, right? This is the team, the voters of Morgan Hill chose, right? And they, we're all at borrow time here and, and, and try to do our best. Whether or not we agree or so, that doesn't mean we don't, we don't have respect for each other. And, and, and I truly have respect for anyone who, whether it's a commissioner, a council member, a city teammate, or anyone who works for a nonprofit in the city or just pass their share to give back to the community and, and, and despite all the agreements, and I've noticed it again tonight, Morgan Hill is still a, a small town. We all know each other and there, there's so many people in this room that we, we all know, right? Across from left to right, in between and up and down. Including some folks from, from Gilroy. Welcome to Morgan Hill, the beautiful Morgan Hill. You would love to have a downtown like ours, don't you? You know, we all had a head over the face where we said, why do we do this, right? And I'm sure you, the both of you had, had it as well. Now you, now you can say and proudly say, I've done it. And, and I thank you for all you've done and I hope you will have a lot more time to spend with your families and with Michelle and just, just do the fun things. Maybe that took second row over the past few years and then, then life will continue even when you're not in the spotlight or if you don't have a certain title anymore, at least for the time being. So you're always welcome back. Please continue to share your advice and, but from the bottom of my heart, thank you both of you for all you've been doing for the city of Morgan Hill. Be careful what you wish for. Thank you and I appreciate that. Okay. So, no, do we?
Mayor, I want to ask, are we, are we making comments for the entirety of the council meeting now or will we be making comments when we return? Okay. So then I'd just like to address my colleagues who have been with us and I want to thank you very much for all the time and the work that you've put in. I know that you both care deeply about the city. I've seen it and I've seen it in the work and the dedication that you've shown. So thank you very much. You've both contributed greatly to the city. I appreciate your, you know, your commitment and your enthusiasm with all of the topics that we faced and there've been some really hard and difficult ones. And, you know, we, together have had to negotiate, but I think we've, we've been better for it. I know I've been better for it and I've learned from both of you. And so I want to thank you deeply. I hope that you have, I'm, I'm a bit envious, I'll say, because I know that you will be able to enjoy and and so many, so many different things without the agenda. And you should, because you've deserved it. But I hope that you both know as you leave that you've left your mark on Morgan Hill. You've made it a better place for all of us. And we will continue to look to you for, you know, for your contributions, however that is, that, that you decide to share with this council. So thank you very much and I hope. However, that is that that you decide to share with this council. So thank you very much and I hope they I wish you luck and and happiness and. Anything that. That one would wish for in all your future endeavors. I know that you'll do great with them.
Thank you.
So thank you again, Mayor. So I didn't realize we were gonna say say everybody, so I didn't say a word. Some words about my my good colleague, John McKay, council member John McKay. And I I just wanted to say, John, over the two years, I really got to know you in a different light. I just appreciate all the insightfulness and and the in-depth questions. That you were able to address to various members of the staff. They were very enlightening to me. It helped me make some of my decisions going forward. I I deeply appreciated those moments. Some of them were very tense. And I, just like the mayor, I know you're on many of the committees. And I know you give a lot of, you gave a lot of your time on these committees and I just want you to know. I appreciate everything that you've done to make Morgan Hill, you know, a better city than when you first came in. And I believe you did. And so going forward, it would be my honor to, you know, have you say that you're my friend. I hope you will. And good luck to you.
Okay, John.
Yep. I thought this was a workshop. I thought he was going to go first.
Okay, Mayor always goes last.
Not always, but okay, this time. Well, first of all, I just want to say what an incredible honor it has been to serve this community. For those of you that have served in elective office, you know that, you know, not every day is an easy day. But it's incredibly rewarding and especially when I sit in a room like this and I see so many people that are looking to the future in this community. And I think, you know, I've done my best. I've done everything I could to get us to where we are. I'm not going to hand it off now. And I'm feeling good about who we're handing it off to and I hope I can support you properly. I hope that we can do the right thing. I. I've learned so much about this community. I thought I knew a lot about it, but when you get to sit on the dais and deal with this incredible staff and meet the people in the community. Meet fellow elected officials, both at the community level and at the state level, you you realize you are working with some of the best and some of the finest. Some of the most committed, some of the most honest, some of the most dedicated people. So I look around and I see those people. And I hope that this community appreciates what that really means. And I hope that this. This council, this future council will respect that, will respect the fact this community relies on them to make good decisions. And the good news is this city council has some of the best staff to help with that guidance. It just doesn't get any better. I I I travel to conferences around the state and I can't believe that our little community. Is named so often out of the almost five hundred communities in this state, yet Morgan Hill is constantly held up as a shining example. Of how things can be and how they should be. We've gotten sidetracked over the last few years and and we've. We, I don't know if we've ever had business as usual here. I feel like we've been, I feel like I've been a wartime council member. We we got going and and right off the bat, stuff started coming at us. We had. The the George Floyd murder and the and the and then the the protests. We had those. We have, I talked to our police chief and that poor guy, he was just, I was going to police chief and. He stepped right in the breach and he handled everything so professionally that not only did our own staff learn that. Staff from other cities came to learn from us. That's an example of how we are in Morgan Hill. We set. A very high bar for other communities to follow. And and I just. I gotta say, you know, like Christina said, we had the wildland fires, we had the evacuation. We had COVID nineteen and everything that came with it. It wasn't just a pandemic, but it was an economic disaster. And yet we pulled through it and we did so much better than so many other commu- communities. It was just amazing. Other communities are so envious about how we came through with with our staff and budget relatively intact and all our services for everybody in this community. You probably never noticed that there was a hiccup in the budget and and what we thought we could do. It's because everybody in this community and this city staff step up and work together and we're really. So proud of being a part of this community. I I hope this council respects that. I hope that you do the hard work, you put in the time, you respect. Everybody in the community, but also respect our city staff that quite frankly, they're going to get you there. The only time we got in trouble is when we didn't. All of staff's recommendations. Other than that, we have been a model of a city. So. I have a lot more I want to say, but I think I've already said too much. So what what I want to do is I want to thank my wife. Michelle McKay for putting up with everything that we have to deal with when on city council. All the personal time that we've missed and sometimes we do get some knocks from the sidelines. That can be kind of hurtful to our family members. They know it's not true. The city staff knows it's not true, but you know, it still hurts because we don't know who out there. Doesn't know the truth and might believe it and then that becomes part of their set of beliefs. And so, thank you very much. But I really want to thank the staff. Because quite frankly, and I've known so many of you since since you first entered. City staff positions and I I watched all of you just grow and climb through. The different positions here and I look around and I I I joke because I knew Chris Gillen when he was. Working on Parks and Rec, I don't know what you're doing, but and my God, he is. One of the top leadership in the community and I'm not going to say that about everybody because I look around, there are too many people. To say that too. Those are the things that stand out. So with that, if I if you would please indulge me, this is why I want to go after the mayor. So I'm sorry. If if city leadership could meet me in front of dais or picture, I would really appreciate. Can I do that, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. As an outgoing council member, I get the privilege of a little indulgence. That's the last thing I'm asking for, I I think. So I really want to honor everybody at city hall because truly, if you if you believe in teammates, this is the place you should be looking because this is where. The culture and the spirit of what happens in Morgan Hill live. And with this, I'm going to present this to you, city manager Christina Turner. My thanks. Okay.
Ready for a photo? And then it comes to your back. One, two, three.
Are we good? We all want to go home, so let's go.
I should have warned you. All right, well, I'm going to go ahead and continue the theme of thanking our our wonderful teammates. I can tell you that when I first started. It was twelve years ago and as Christina mentioned, I am a retired San Jose firefighter. And being a firefighter, it's like you're living with your second family. So. Into this team was pretty easy, but I didn't know I was coming into this team. And it was a pleasant surprise. I've had the privilege of working under three wonderful city managers. No city manager could ever hold a candle to Christina Turner. I can tell you that working for and with this team has been one of the biggest honors of my life. And having my wife and my daughter in this room, that says a lot. I also want to thank my daughter and my wife for putting up with all of this and. Late nights and meetings from Hawaii, murmuring. From the office while everyone was trying to sleep and we're still in our meeting. I really want to thank you for all that you've done and all the support you've given me. And I also want to thank my teammates because again. The job that we do here on on the dais is a fraction of what and how this city is run. You know, I was a little nostalgic and thinking about, you know, when I first started and I remember we didn't need in grand council chambers as we are today. If you walked through that door and you walked through past a dark room, that's a that's a conference room, that was where we had our council meetings. It would actually bleed into the hallway towards the bathroom. That was it. So that is kind of a a a marker for how this city has come. And how we've grown, but it's not because of what we've done up here. It's because of our teammates. And as John and others have said, as traveling and and doing other things and and and. Working with other council members and mayors, when you say Morgan Hill, they say, oh, I love and just fill in the blank. And that is, that is, that is what we have here. And I say we, I'm using the collective, we, all of us that live here in Morgan Hill and those who wish they lived here in Morgan Hill. So again, over the twelve years, I can't thank my teammates enough. And when we say teammates, it truly is like a team. And we we have always worked together that way and I am so appreciative of that. Again, it made the decision of continuing on much, much easier. So I want to thank my teammates for what you've done for this city. You know, should we not realize that we have less than two hundred full-time employees. Run this city that is so impeccably well-run. And again, it's not because of me. I always jokingly say that when I when I come in, when I'm meeting people, I say, oh, there's my boss. But, you know, Christina truly does run the city. And again, I could not have had a better teammate. Than than you, Christina. So I want to thank you very much. So with that, I will stop talking and I will now open this up for public comment. We are, this is a council meeting. So if any members of the public wish to address this, you may come up. I don't think we're asking anyone to throw any speaker cards, but you may come up to the podium over there if you'd like.
Hello. My name is Ronald Sosero. I came to the city council ten years ago applying for a commission job. And now Mayor Constantine. Asked me. What are you going to do for the city? And I kind of, I wasn't ready for that and I told them we were going to do something for the children. And both John and McKay and Constantine and the whole council were behind us. And I want to thank you both for what you've done for the city of Morgan Hill.
Mayor Constantine, city staff and council members. Mayor Constantine, I remember you as a council member. You always supported the community in many ways. You, I remember you collaborated and brought people to the table. So that we can find solutions. So during the reelection, I I know that you always. Came into the community events and felt very comfortable. You're just a grounder as a person. I just see you that way. But I just want to thank you for all of those things that you've done and like to see you do many more. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, thank you. I'm Tony Von Tepin with the Morgan Hill Tennis Club. I just wanted to thank you, Rich. And John and particularly Gio, Baby Park is in your your district for supporting the tennis club and helping us with improvements and. I remember what John said about Chris Gillen being so much help with the tennis club and. And lastly, Rich, thanks for wearing our Morgan Hill Tennis Club hat around town. I appreciate it. Thank you. Hopefully we'll see you on the tennis court. Thank you. Right, well, that I'll go ahead and then and close by the comment and that actually reminded me of one thing and I I. We already embarrassed Chris a little bit, but I'm going to do it again because one of the things I loved about this city is that. We never said no. It's very easy to say no, but this city works very hard to say yes. And I remember. As a young council member, I had a a member of the public come up to me at an event. And asked, said that we need handball courts at Gavin Park. And he explained to me, I know all the 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 things they do during the summer, all the tournaments, and I said. Okay, that should be easy enough. So I went to Chris and I say, hey, Chris. We need handball courts at Gavin Park. Can you get those for us? And I'll never forget the look on Chris's face. He says. Okay. Not knowing how to, how we were going to go about it and knowing that we didn't have the money, we didn't have the funds and there was no plan. Instead of just saying no, taking the easy road, he said, okay. And it took a little while. We have two beautiful new handball courts and that park has been regenerated rejuvenated and I really appreciate that. So again. That again goes to the city and and what it truly means to be a member of this city, not just on the on the council and elected, but as a member of the citizen of Morgan Hill. So with that, I will now move to the city clerk to go through our one and only item, item number one, which is to move the election certifications. Oh, I've been reminded that I have to adopt the agenda. So I'm going to ask for a motion to please adopt the agenda. So move. Second, we have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And motion carries unanimously. It wasn't on the script.
Mayor, if we could do public comment for items not on the agenda also.
Thank you. Okay, I did say this was a meeting. So if there's any members of the public wishing to address us on items not on today's agenda, which is the one thing we have. Which is the election, we do so at this time. And do we have anybody on Zoom?
I don't see any hands up, sir.
Okay, so with that, I will go ahead and close public comment. And now we'll move to item number one.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, my teammates, the community here tonight. It is my honor to present the certification of the election this evening. Manvacing of the November eighth, twenty twenty-two election has been completed by the registrar voter's office. The certification of the election provided by the registrar is included in the staff report. The resolution that is included in that staff report tonight includes the total number of votes cast throughout the city for each of the races on the ballot. The names and offices of the candidates that were voted for, the measures that were voted for, and the number of votes received at each precinct. And the number of votes received for each candidate and each measure throughout the city. With that, my very brief staff report, staff recommends moving forward with the adoption of the resolution unless you have any questions.
Are there any questions of Ms. Bigelow? Seeing none. I'm going to ask for public comment. So any members of the public wishing to address us on this item, which is the. Any members of the public wishing to address us on this item, which is the election results? Not seeing any. Before we continue, I also want to embarrass Chris one more time. It's Chris's birthday today. So happy birthday, Chris. Sorry, Chris. Okay. Public comments closed.
Public comments closed. So we can now entertain motions.
Is there a motion? So moved second. Motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so now that that's official, it's time to start the transition. So if I could ask Mayor Constantine and Councilmember McKay to please come join me here at the lectern. My team on behalf of the city would like to present you with a farewell gift.
What do you want to stand?
Right in the middle.
Okay, all right, there you go.
You know, we got the biggest signs we could find. These are signal signs, so. But on behalf of the city team, we just wanted to say thank you so much for your innumerable contributions to our community. And thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. To be wondering what's going on, they're going to change their address?
And I would say have a seat, but we have an incredibly full house this evening. So perhaps you can make your way up to the side and then we will start the oath of office. And if you'd like, we can set these back on the table. We can put it back on the table. That way you don't have to hold it. I'd like to invite our new mayor, Mark Turner, up to join me. Congratulations. Welcome to the team.
Thank you.
So I will administer your oath of office, and I'm going to break it into phrases. And I'll have you repeat each phrase after me. So I'll have you raise your right hand, and I will say aye, and then you'll state your name and we'll continue.
Okay.
So I
I, Mark Turner.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution
The Constitution.
Of the United States
Of the United States.
And the state of California.
And the state of California.
Against all enemies
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I bear true faith and allegiance
And I bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully
And that I will well and faithfully
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
For which I'm about to enter.
For which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. And then you can hit this.
Hey, do you want to say to the police chief? That if you get a call about 911, it was my grandson who actually dialed 911, so.
Are we looking here?
Yeah. Who are we looking at?
Ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you.
And if I could have County Supervisor-elect Sylvia Reynis come join me along with Councilmember-elect Yvonne Martinez-Beltrane.
This is fine. So I have a script. You can break it down into phrases. You could help me break it down. So it's the phrases that are broken down here, right? Yeah, it's easier. All right.
So good afternoon, everyone. I'm Sylvia Reynis. I'll be your supervisor and serve you as of the new year. And it's my honor tonight to swear this beautiful, beautiful woman who has served our community and will continue to do so as of the new year. So let's begin. I
I
Yvonne
Yvonne Martinez-Beltrane.
You got that one right. Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully
And that I will well and faithfully
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
For which I'm about to enter
For which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. Give a big round of applause.
You guys want to come here? Ready? One, two, three. One, two.
Councilmember-elect Marilyn Lebers, if you could join me.
Welcome back to the team. So I know you're an old pro at this. I will break it into phrases, and after I say aye, you'll state your name. Please raise your right hand. Aye.
I, Marilyn Lebers.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And that I bear true faith and allegiance.
And I bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution to the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully
I will well and faithfully
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
For which I'm about to enter
For which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
And I'd like to ask a couple of very special people to come up with me. I have my neighbors who have been so faithful to me. I'd like Tony and, I mean, like Tom and Jackie and also Mary Ann to come up and have their picture taken with me, please. They've been with me some time.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you.
And then Marilyn, you can take your seat at the dais. And with that, I turn it over to Mayor Mark Turner.
Thank you.
There we are.
And Mayor, I have more.
Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening, and thank you to my family and so many supporters. We appreciate all of you coming out, not just supporting what is new in my life, but what is new for several of us up here on the dais. And I'm excited to get started and work with my colleagues and with the city staff and the teammates that were talked so highly about by others earlier this evening. I take this moment to allow any of the newly elected and re-elected officials to say a few words. I've got to make sure I get this down here. And I don't know, I was following, trying to follow Rich's lead and just kind of put it out there. Or if I'll just go ahead and assign Councilmember Martinez-Beltrane, why don't you say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor Turner.
I like the sound of that.
Well, first of all, welcome, everybody, and thank you for coming out tonight. I see some wonderful faces from Morgan Hill, from Gilway, and also from San Jose. Thank you for making the trek out here. I really appreciate it. It's really overwhelming to be back, and I really want to thank you for entrusting me with your vote to return back on the dais. I enjoy representing you. That is something that is one of the biggest honors that I've had in my life. I think I've shared with many people that I grew up in Morgan Hill, and every issue that comes across our desk on this dais is important to me. It may not be our issue or my colleague's issue, but every single issue is important to somebody. And so we try and give it the weight that it deserves. First and foremost, I want to thank my family. Because without them, and that's why I had them stand up there with me. Four years ago, I was holding my daughter, and all of them were toddlers. And I give the biggest, they bore the biggest sacrifice because the time that we put in and all of the events, and I think they want to go to another event. It really, it really can take a toll, you know, on the family. So I wanted to say thank you to my husband, Roberto. Many people know him. He's always, he's always there helping me with the girls, and that's the biggest help that I can have. I want to say thank you to my three girls, Yvonne, Joanna, and Adeline. I'm glad I am an inspiration to you. And everything that I dedicate myself to, I dedicate for you and for the kids that come along with you. And to my mother and my grandmother, my late grandmother stood up there with me four years ago. She's no longer here with me, but I know that she's extremely proud of the work that we've done here. Mom, thank you for everything. I want to get possible for me to serve. And without you, I, there's no way I could do it. To my sister, who's gone before with her own kids, I really appreciate you being here and always helping how you can. And all the community members and my friends who have supported me along the way. And it's been, it's been a rough ride sometimes. And you know, the little duck that is paddling so very fast is so. I know it so well. I ran here the night my daughters had a winter recital. And I had to choose between getting them ready or getting me ready for the night. It's always them, of course. But somehow, you know, I made it here at two minutes to seven, having got them to the recital. So but to the community members who are here, I really want to thank you because, you know, I didn't know that I could do it. Some of you, maybe you were just telling me that I believed you, that I could do it. And here we are. Here we are four years later, and we're going to give it another go. And this time it's going to be better because I know what I'm doing. I've built incredible relationships to my colleagues that are here from the other cities. Thank you. You've been measurable, your leadership and your mentorship. When I needed it, you took me in and showed me, you know, the way, I guess. And I've really needed that mentorship along the way, and I'm incredibly, incredibly grateful. So thank you to the people who come to the meetings and share with us, you know, what it is that's important to you, and you take the time to email and call and text and show your piece of Morgan Hill, and what you're saying is, it's important. It means a lot to me. I know I don't always get to respond. I try to. I don't always get to do that, but I hope you continue to do it. I get so much value from hearing from you, even when you dissent against what I'm thinking especially. It makes me think and rethink and weigh it a different way and look at it a different way. And I don't want you to think for one second that it goes unnoticed because it does not. To the city staff, there are some of you that I leaned on very heavily. To Christina, Chris, Rebecca. I really want to tell you thank you for having the patience with me to go over things and make sure that I understand them. It's, you know, it's invaluable, the resources that you bring to the city, the dedication and the commitment. I don't care where we are on the issue. We have respect for each other. Yvonne, I want to tell you thank you for giving me all of the leeway that you do and giving me the tools that I need and then allowing me to do my job. I think you're incredibly gifted in what you do. I think you are an incredible professional for all that you do, and I want you to know that I value you. Chief Paulsgrove, I want you to know that I've seen you kind of grow up in this role and everything, the commitment that you bring. I don't know that you thought you could do it yourself when all this was, you know, kind of falling apart. You've done an amazing job, and you won me over 10 times over. So thank you. To our new staff that's come on, you know, as I've been here, I hope that we continue to grow. And that, and Brittany, and Daryl, you've been here forever. Chris, you know, I just want you guys to know that I really value all of the work that you do. And I hope that this council, that we will, that we will be able to work together as a great team that we are. And finally, to my colleagues, I'm looking forward to working with you. I'm very excited that you're here, and I know that you'll bring a new element to us here. Listening to the oldies but goodies that I served on with the Planning Commission remains freeing. Your mentorship and value is, that's incredible. Thank you for everything that you do for Morgan Hill. And thank you, Mr. Borjoli, Councilmember Borjoli, for all you do as well. With that, I'll say to another four years, I stand on the shoulders of everyone who's walked before me.
You're a council member. Councilmember Lebers.
Good evening. It's so nice to see so many people that I know out there. And I want to thank everyone that
It's so nice to see so many people that I know out there, and I want to thank everyone that decided that I could do this job again. I was off for a few years. Some of you know that, and I was done when that ended. But in the last year, I have decided that I can contribute, and I decided to run again. And I sincerely thank you for the confidence you have placed in me to vote me into office. So thank you very much. I when I left before, I felt like I was leaving family when all the teammates were saying goodbye to me before. And it's so nice to be back with the family, so I'm very happy. And I'm excited to work with this council. Some are new and some are old. So thank you very much, and I look forward, Christina, to having your leadership and Dawn, your experience. So again, thank you very much. I plan to do my very best to serve this community. I'm always open to hear from you, so please stay in touch. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Levers. And I just want to say a few words as well, thanking my family, my daughters, my son-in-law, my grandson is here. I think Mayor Constantine said it best when he made reference to family and the support mechanism that family brings throughout a time like this. The campaign can be grueling, but man, I'm telling you, I had so much fun. And I have been looking forward to this evening and this opportunity. I'm excited to get started, excited to work with my colleagues and with the city staff. And I would like to say thank you also to Mayor Constantine and Councilmember McKay for your many years of service and your dedication and commitment to this community. Let's give them another round of applause. Also like to thank Mayor Constantine for his graciousness as well. After the election, he got a phone call from him, and he's been working with me in the transition, had a chance to meet with him. Mayor Constantine, thank you. I look forward to many more conversations as I get started in this role as well. I have said throughout the campaign, I've had a catchphrase that I've used, and it's not just a catchphrase. I look forward to working with my colleagues and the staff to bring Morgan Hill together, to move Morgan Hill forward, and to make Morgan Hill the best it can be. So with that, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to adjourn this evening's meeting in honor of Mayor Constantine and Councilmember McKay. Have you adjourned? Ladies and gentlemen, we are journeying to this room where we will have refreshments available, and we can mix and mingle and have a good time. Thank you all for being here tonight. We appreciate it.
All together?
Yes. We remain seated? How do you want us to?
First, sitting.
Seated first, then standing. Okay. Yeah, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Ready, one, two.